Yeah, they can have it.
Seven o'clock. I have to go ahead and see what's in there.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Called meeting to order at seven o'clock and I'd like to have an adoption of the recommended agenda, please.
I'd like to make that motion, please.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to make my motion clear, if I could.
Please.
I move to approve the agenda with these changes. I move to move the appointment of mayor to immediately after the vice president election. Two, I move that item O under new business be removed.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry to delay this sentence. Thank you.
I'll take care of it, Nolan. I have a question on that. We have time restraints and our attorney will be coming here to visit with us at the end, so to remove that basically invalidates anything that she would have. She could still talk, but I feel like we're causing problems for ourselves. I did speak to all of the candidates that we would probably move that to the end for the appointed appointment of the mayor and I do appreciate the five candidates that have filled out the questionnaires. If we do that, we're going to probably go in and out of executive session and we do have a hearing at 7:20.
There are also people out in the public as well that would like to hear what the lawyer has to say, so I feel by removing that prohibits the community from hearing that as well.
Okay. Misty, would you do a roll call, please?
Would you please restate the motion?
You want to restate it?
Yes, I want to make sure I understand it.
I move to approve the agenda with these changes. One, I move to move the appointment of the mayor to immediately after the vice president election. Two, I move that item O under new business be removed.
Thank you.
I'd like to say also that by having a mayor appointment at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to have to limit. I'm sure there's a lot of public here that have things to say about who they want to be mayor and who they don't want to and by having it at the end of the meeting, we've got more time for public comments.
Any other discussion?
Kara Hagan, yes. Georgia Holmes?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Five to three, motion carries.
Okay, the agenda that the public has is not corrected, so need to know that.
It's correct.
Not corrected, so it will be amended, I guess, if the motion passes.
Sorry, everybody out there.
Okay.
Guess we know where the public stands for you guys, don't we?
Yeah, sorry.
Not a good idea.
Let's keep the meeting moving.
Never mind, Nolan, please. Okay, then the adoption of the agenda will be the unamended agenda and I would go on with the conflict of interest items. Does anyone have any conflict of interest? Okay, and the motion then is to approve this agenda as unamended. The election of the council vice president will be first. Okay, and we are instructed not to use a secret ballot. Do I will entertain a motion for a vice president?
I'll nominate Bob Nelson.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
Can I move that nomination cease if there are no other nominations?
We have one member of the council that would. Are you willing to serve in that capacity, Bob?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. I guess we can do it by vote. Please do a roll call.
We only have one.
I know. You can say, you can say yes or no. You have that right?
Yeah, sure, I can take a roll call.
Okay, do a roll call.
Kara Hagan, yes. Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
No.
Bob Nelson?
I'll abstain.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
Okay, Bob, you're the new vice president.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will go on to the appointment of the mayor and we have five people that are on our. Misty, can you make sure we stay on time for the 7:20?
Yes. How would you like me to make your last?
Seven twenty. Okay, we have Adam Heath. I don't know if you would like to come up to the stage you're sure welcome to. We have Carl Ashley. We have Uriah Llewellyn and Chris Penau. Maybe you'd like to stand or at least let people know. George Cuddy, I missed one there.
She got it.
I think we should.
Would you like to come up to the side here? All right, we had a questionnaire that we filled out and you all answered that. You don't have to come up, but you might want to speak at the microphone if there's any questions we have. We do have questions that we cannot ask you in executive session, but if you're willing to speak on any of them in public, you can. So, do you have all those, Misty?
What are you asking me?
I'm trying to decide how we want to do this. We can't do a secret ballot.
Would they like to speak? Does anyone?
That's what I was asking.
For them, public comment?
That was the reason why for the attorney to come? I didn't understand what you said.
I don't need the attorney to tell me. I think that's a suggestion we should allow them after.
No, I did, yeah. Do any of the candidates want to come to the microphone to speak on your behalf? Okay, I really feel all of you should at least come up so we can see all of you. If you wouldn't mind, at least come to this microphone over here. It's really hard for us to see from the stage, I apologize. And if you wouldn't mind, just state your name and your address.
My name is Carl Ashley, I live at 510 Albany Ave.
My name is Adam Heath, I live at 720 Happy Hollow.
My name is Chris Penau and I live at 201 South River Street at the Brookside Apartments.
And I'm George Cuddy, 308 Meadowart Drive here in Hot Springs and I just wanted to just say that thankful for the opportunity to apply for the job. I think that anytime that you have a change in leadership within a city that's unannounced, there's some consternation that goes along with that and I feel that I would be able to help maybe heal that and smooth the waters and provide some leadership since I've had experience working with that in the past and other jobs. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to apply and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George.
I would like to thank council also, having had many years in service as a council member and serving as president of the council for three years, I believe my background substantiates itself.
Thank you very much, Carl.
I'd like to say also thank you for the opportunity of applying for this position. Like I said a couple weeks ago, I ran for mayor last year and the reason why I ran is because I love Hot Springs so much. I care about Hot Springs. I serve on the American Legion Post 71 as a tablin. I'm on the RD committee for the Boys and Girls Club here in Hot Springs because I care about our youth. I care about our children and our children are the future of the Hot Springs and our country. We need to make sure our children have the resources that they need to become good productive citizens in the future and we need to do that by working with the schools, working with after-school programs like the Boys and Girls Club, like 48. And also, the number one reason I see is I am very passionate about our vets. We are the veterans' town. RVA is the number one issue in our town and what Bob McDonald said, that they want to move RVA to Rapid City and that would be bad for veterans here in Hot Springs and all the veterans that come from all over just to get healing here in Hot Springs. They see so many veterans that come, huh, the Evans Plons, and they hear their stories and they say the reason why they're getting healed is because they can get healed in Hot Springs. And you can ask anybody in this town. I work hard. I was nominated for volunteer of the year because I work hard and if you guys give me this opportunity, I will work hard for the city of Hot Springs. I am single, I don't have a girlfriend, I don't have a family, so I will put 100% in working for Hot Springs and making Hot Springs great again and getting Hot Springs back on the map. So I'm asking you guys to vote for me tonight and give me this chance to work with all of you guys and to work with Nolan and to work with Misty because with me and Nolan working together, we can make this town rock and roll and get on the map.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Well, I'm a third generation, twelve-year classmate of Hot Springs. I'm glad to see that this many people have passion about serving in Hot Springs and I'm proud to be one of them. I'm a historic commissioner for the Historic Commission, I'm the chairman of that, I'm the president of the Historic Society and I've done a lot of other things for the community, but I'm here to offer myself up to serve if you so desire.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do you like what? I would like to make a statement, if I could.
Statement, oh.
Thank you.
Carolyn, would you like to?
I would like to thank everybody that put their name forward and for us to all realize we're just eight people up here, we're going to make an appointment, but the real election is June the 6th.
I had that on my agenda here. Uriah, would you please come up and introduce yourself so we can see who you are too?
Yeah, you missed the opportunity to speak. Do you want to come up?
How long a speech do I get to give?
Well, we have to quit here at 7:20 anyway.
Six minutes, 50 seconds.
Well, my name is Uriah Llewellyn. I didn't even know I was supposed to give a speech, otherwise I'd have been here on time. But I did dress up, or. I've lived in town for about a year and a half. If you've read my answer to the questionnaire, you probably know that already and I think it's important as a citizen that when there was a need for an interim mayor, that I offered my services and I felt like I was a good candidate for that and I put forth those answers to your questions in the questionnaire. I really like this town. I've only lived here about a year and a half and I think it's important that we have a nice, smooth continuum before we have another duly elected mayor and I think I can serve well in that capacity and make that happen. I don't think there's a need for any big changes or small changes in this short period of time, four months, and so basically I see myself as just someone who's filling in that point, so.
Thank you.
There's my impromptu speech.
Could you give us your address too, please?
Excuse me?
Your address?
2244 Minicotta Avenue.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Does council have any questions for the candidates? Okay, we have, we're going to have to do a ballot, paper ballot, so do you have any paper for us? Thank you. I would put your number one choice on the ballot and Misty will pick them up or will hand them down, whatever, and then you will need to do. Should we, in case we have to use it again, should we? She's got a lot.
Oh, he's got money.
Okay, I'm going to read, there's a paper vote where all the names are put on the forward and placed on a ballot. So we have five names. Council will then put their vote for their preferred choice and should it not be five to eight in support of one name, the top two votes will receive in advance and the final vote will be between the two members. If there should be a four to four tie, this will be decided by the flip of a coin and we will do at the end, we'll do a roll call by council. Okay, council, would you please vote?
Oh. Oh, okay, just a second. I didn't realize you'd taken. Okay. Well, I have the stage, I'm sorry, I didn't make enough copies of the agenda. That would have been my bad, but we usually have more than enough and they went fast tonight, so, sorry.
George, if you could repeat that once one more time, we need more than 50% to clear the elected mayor. It's close to just.
Okay, Nolan asked for maybe to give you a little bit more information. Council will vote and there should not, should there not be a five to eight in support of one name, the top two receivers will advance until the final vote was between the two members. So I will wait for you to go ahead and give us a tally.
George Cuddy has six votes.
Six out of eight, so George Cuddy will be our new elected mayor. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and go on to, one minute left. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the March 6th council meeting.
Nolan, why wouldn't the new mayor take over running the meeting?
I would have to swear them in and take their own vote.
Can't you do that now?
I'm not sure. I don't see why not.
I mean, it's done normally in the July meeting when we have a mayor.
Do you have the oath written?
Yeah.
It's up to him if he wants to come up and do it, I guess. Should I answer that?
Oh, you know, we have our 7:20.
Oh, yes, that's right.
So why don't you come up, have a seat, and then I'll swim in after the hearing? No?
Yeah, because this is a bribe. The minutes, yeah, in the paper, just said marketing that we went into.
That was just his ad, not our legal minutes. Our legal minutes, I have both of them in there. You were voting to approve our legal minutes.
Oh, okay. And it's in there.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
7:20?
Yep, here in time.
Okay, it's 7:20, we have the hearing.
We didn't really have those minutes.
We can get back to that.
Yeah, I know. Okay, we have a hearing for the temporary alcoholic license to be issued to Woolies. Got to read this here.
Would you entertain a motion to approve?
Just a minute, please, Caroline, I do not, you need to wait until your attorney are given the attention. Okay, temporary alcoholic beverage license application for Woolies Western Grill to be used at the Mammoth Site on 42817 for the casino night. This is their annual fundraiser for the Mammoth Site and we will entertain a motion to approve a license.
It says no vote needed.
We need a motion to entertain the license, though.
Are there any other comments?
Yes, that's basically what this is for, public comments, anyone? I guess we needed a motion to open the hearing, didn't we?
No.
No? Close it, no, close it? You're going to get it if you want it. All right, I guess there is no objections to having this license.
So now I need to make my motion to approve the license.
Yep, that's what I was hoping you'd do.
Would you like my motion?
Could I have a motion to approve?
I'm trying. You have a motion.
Just a minute, wait to be recognized. To approve that license, Caroline, would you please give us that motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the temporary alcohol beverage license for Woolies Western Grill to be used at the Mammoth Sites 42817 Casino Night.
I'll second it.
And who did that? Krista. Okay, discussion, anybody, public, all right. Motion, would you do a roll call for me, please?
Kara Hagan? Yes. Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
Yes.
Krista Spillane?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel?
I'll abstain.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on our agenda is communication from the public.
No, we're going to swear the name.
Going to swear the.
Okay, you can do the swear in the minute, please.
That's right. Do you want to come up here, George, if your mother wants to take pictures? Your wife would like it to be recorded, please. Make sure her have an uncle.
Yeah, listen to the boss.
Do you want to do this, George?
Sure, I can do that.
It's either the mayor or the finance officer, if you think so. Right.
Okay, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
The Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor for the city of Hot Springs.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor of the city of Hot Springs.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. Would you feel confident running our meeting now? I wish you would.
Okay.
Please take over. Thank you. Your job now. Yes, he's got one. He might need the microphone, Georgia.
Well, first of all, just before we have communications from the public, I'd just like to say thank you to all the vote of confidence from the council, look forward to working with you and thank you, George, for stepping in. And for the citizens, I just hope that you'll keep in communication and we've had a lot of forward progress in Hot Springs and a lot of working together and I think we can keep that momentum going and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be a part of it.
And we're going to go back up to the minutes.
To the minutes, okay.
So we will be a little off.
The next, all of you have had a chance to review the minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the 6th March council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to claims and I believe that we can take items A and B together.
No, including those separate, actually.
Okay, we'll look at item A then, bills in between.
I make a motion that we postpone voting on reimbursement legal fields, legal fees for Nolan Schroder until after legal counsel has arrived due to the fact that I do have some legal questions as to whether we should pay that or not.
And I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and I assume that that is part of the bills, one of the bills in between, okay. Are there any other discussion concerning the motion and the second that's been brought before the floor? If not, all those in favor, and Tim, was your motion to accept the other bills, it's that one, okay. So the motion is that we accept the bills in between with the exception of the Nolan Schroder legal reimbursement fees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Kara Hagan?
No.
Georgia Holmes?
Yes.
Andrea Kramer? What am I voting on? That I want it?
You're voting on approving the bills in between with the exception of the one paying Nolan's legal fees.
So your answer is yes? Yes, thank you. Bob Nelson?
No.
Caroline Swartzenbach?
No.
Krista Spillane?
No.
Tim Tesher?
Yes.
Skylar Wetzel?
No.
Three to five.
Okay, the motion fails.
Do you need a motion to approve as it is?
We do need a motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the bills in between. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead. Would you please?
I'm going to go there.
Okay, thanks, Carl.
Carl Ashley, 510 Albany Ave, Hot Springs. My question on this is you're taking out or allowing the payment of the attorney's fees for Nolan, but you're not allowing the attorney to speak to those fees before you put it to a vote and I think that's improper because we don't know at this point in time because the lawyer hasn't said anything as to whether it's even legal. If it's a gift, it's illegal. I'd like to find out beforehand whether it's legal or illegal to pay those bills.
Can I ask a question, Misty? Do you have a letter from the attorney for guarding this bill? Did you bring it with you?
I have got a copy of it. Thank you. I was trying to find it and I do have her exact words where I questioned after you came and spoke with me at City Hall. I posed that question to our city attorney and if you have it, would you please read it? Or I can read it, either way. It was to me.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I have to get husband so my.
Questions not on her, but it was after a conversation Carl had questioning the legality of the bill, which was already approved at a council meeting. I questioned that since I'm responsible for paying the bills and I wanna make sure I do everything right, and here's her response. "Misty, while I cannot divulge what was discussed in executive session, my advice to you at this time is that in general, a municipality should not make expenditures that exceed the city's statutory authority. Paying an employee's personal bills likely exceeds the city's statutory authority. The city council, after being fully apprised, chose to pay the legal fees up to $2,000. Because the city council has decided to make that payment, basically approving that claim, you should pay it. The city council ultimately determines which claims to approve. With regard to this issue, I did not give my legal advice solely to Georgia Holmes, but rather to the entire city council. After the city council made its determination, I have not advised anyone not to pay the claim."
Okay, so as I understand the letter, that we do have legal authority from the city attorney to be able to pay that claim, and I believe that we-
We do have authority, but there's ambiguity in that letter, too.
Understand, and I understand also that the council has voted and was approved by the entire council at a previous meeting.
No, it was not.
It wasn't.
By majority. By majority.
By majority, good counsel, okay. So what we still need to do then is to approve the bills in between, and thank you, Carl, for raising that question, appreciate it. So entertain a motion to-
Do you have a motion, Ed?
That was a while ago, I forgot here. Okay, is there any further discussion concerning the motion on the bills in between? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, go ahead and give your roll call, please.
Kara Hagan?
Yes.
Georgia Holmes?
No.
Andrea Kramer?
No, the legislature does not allow us to pay personal bills.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Caroline Swartzamuck?
Yes.
Kristis Blain?
Yes.
Tim Tesher?
No.
Skylar Wetzel?
Yes.
We have five to three.
Motion does carry. We'll move on to item B under claims, current claims. I'll make a motion to approve current claims.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, we- It's been moved and seconded that we pay the current claims, is there any discussion?
I'm staying.
Okay, and Georgia abstains. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move on down to communications from the public.
Wes Graves, 2400 Hampton. I got a question. It seems like the last couple of months you guys have been in a lot of money on attorney fees. I guess I would kinda maybe like to have a detailed account of actually all the money you guys have spent, and I guess certain dollar amounts on different issues, Nolan's issue, and I guess how much of this has been agreed upon by the whole council, I guess, is my question. How are you guys, are you all coming up with your questions and asking all at one time, or are you just calling individually, or how are we doing this?
Can I speak to that, Wes?
Sure.
Basically, legal fees are, we did have it added up for certain things, that's true, but legal fees, because most of it are confidential, I'm gonna ask our lawyer to actually speak to him on that.
Can you do that? Fill me in on what you're just asking about legal fees and how much we've been adding up.
He wants to see, I think what you're requesting, correct me if I'm wrong, is a list, a detailed breakdown list of your fees and what they were for.
This is a member of the public asking?
Yes.
Okay, there's confidentiality that attaches to the task description. You're entitled to see how much the total is, what my rate is, things of that nature, but the advice sought in my response to that request is confidential, so there are parts of the bill you can see or redacted versions of the bill you can see.
I understand executive session stuff is confidential, but the entire attorney bill should show up somewhere, and it should be accounted for every hour, so we know what we're paying for.
It does, and we have that information, but it's only reviewed by council members.
When you say confidential, in the past, while I was sitting on that council, it was put out, what every council person, basically, how much, in fact, there was retaliation trying to make council people pay back when the rest of the council didn't feel that they were using legal advice properly, so I guess-
Did you ever pay back?
No, no, I did not. I fought pretty hard against these things.
Okay, good.
And I guess, well, I'm kinda curious now, all of a sudden, it's confidential.
It should have always been confidential, that must have been far before my time, but tasks, if they indicate or reflect any city official asking for an opinion or legal advice, or my response giving that legal advice, that is attorney-client privileged and should have stayed confidential.
Well, I guess specifically, I'd like to know how much money we have spent on this Nolan issue.
We're still tallying, aren't we? We have received our final bills for that.
Can I make a statement today? I've tried to find out what my, and I've never asked what the attorney told anybody, that's not my business, but I have asked for the hours attributed to me, what I've cost the city in this, and I've not been able to get it from Sarah.
I have supplied a list of the breakdown as to what fees of mine are related to the grievance appeal. There are certain things that I've already apprised the city council on with regard to confidentiality. If they wanna waive that confidentiality, I've told them how they can go about doing that.
It's confidential, but you can't tell me how many hours I've cost the city?
I've already explained this.
I guess I just don't understand it. I was one person asking, how would that affect anyone else on this council?
I supplied you a three-page letter that goes through the authority on that matter, and I've indicated how the authority says that the council as a whole has to waive that confidential nature of those tasks, and if you do, then, I've already given you my bills, actually, they're not redacted in any way. I'd have to go back and try to reconstruct something more, which would-
The last one we have is from February 14th, so just this period up until now is probably what she's missing.
I supplied that breakdown last week, Thursday, and it was up through that date.
And it has the individual council name and the number of hours?
It has the number of hours, but it does not have the name, and I explained why, and that the council as a whole has to waive that confidentiality.
You also sent me one email saying you could get back with me, but you were too busy to do it right now. I have that email.
I could not do it that day, but I gave it to you last week.
So I guess ultimately, are you going to be able to tell me how many hours and dollars we have spent on this issue?
I think, Wes, obviously, that answer is not available tonight, and-
No, actually, Georgia, it should be available, I mean, it's a simple yes or no.
It is not available tonight for the reasons-
Well, I understand, not tonight.
-confidentiality that had been stated, and I'd ask that you would get with the finance office or at a later date when we get things put together. I also might want to add that at the administration meeting this afternoon, there is a clear policy coming out on how we are going to use the attorney and how that will be done. It'll be a written policy for the council to follow, so.
Thank you. No, I understood it wouldn't be available tonight, and I mean, in the future, the public should be able to see.
Absolutely, with the caveat of the confidentiality protect the attorney-client privilege that goes along with using an attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess to summarize that, Sarah, while you're here, could you clarify, if the council decides to as a body approve releasing the topic of the bills directly to my appeal to the public, the bill information just sets the subject, here's the tally, the number, I'd be permissible?
The total number, sure.
But it takes council approval to do that for a subject?
No, it takes council approval to waive the confidentiality. There's no confidentiality that attaches to the total amount of time I spend on any particular thing.
So if our request is just a private total sum that relates to this one subject, we can do that without council approval?
Without council approval, probably because it would be subject to an open records request.
It's public knowledge, so.
Okay, so make sure that we don't have to go back with council and get you what your request is.
Thank you.
Are there any other communications from the public?
Yes, legally I can speak as from the public. I am part of the public, in four or five months, I will be the public.
Sarah's coming to the, someone's coming to the mic. I don't know who's first.
Tim, let's recognize first, we'll go ahead.
I guess I've got some questions that have been put to me by the public, and I'll speak as the public. This last meeting that we had, I guess the feeling that I'm getting is that putting a council member up for public ridicule is not only unprofessional, but unacceptable. And there was an executive session that went on before this that was based on the Code of Ethics, at which time none of the laws in the Code of Ethics were followed as to section six of this code, and I've had this Code of Ethics thorough ground a lot here lately, but I just want everybody to know that that executive session was totally against our Code of Ethics. We've also already discussed the Nolan bill, I'm sure that's not to the satisfaction of a lot of people, because I didn't, you know, sounds to me like if you sue the city and you win, they will pay your lawyers also. Also, I have some other questions, there's some stuff as to what's going on. Where is the Boulder Falls project? Seems like every time I ask, as part of public works, I get the same answer, and I don't know what's going on. The lean gravel agreement was signed two years ago, that's a million-dollar contract that was supposed to have been paid at $100,000 a year. Nothing's been paid, nothing's been agreed upon since. That's $200,000 that the city is out in the last two years, of which, you know, granted, we're gonna get it sooner or later, but we're in the process of working on our airport, and that billion dollars that we get from the lean gravel goes to the airport, so there's, we're out there hunkling, scraping for money to build stuff at the airport when we've got $100,000 set that we're not getting. Also, I'd like to know what happened to the sled removal at the wastewater plant? Are we still paying for this thing? I know it's not installed, but we're still paying for it, and that's been on the agenda, that's been in the works for over two years, and it's still not put in? Also, it was brought up earlier today in an open meeting, so I can discuss this, that there are possible plans to redo the golf course cart paths to the tune of $20,000 this year for a total of, what was it, a hundred and some thousand for it to all be done?
No.
No.
Seventy-four.
Okay, 74,000.
That plan was done in 24.
And that's over a few years, but still, $20,000 this year, if the council passes it, is still an awful lot of money for golf cart paths, especially when we have only budgeted $50,000 this year for our total streets. I want you folks to think about that, because this is all coming up. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Tim, I appreciate, you know, you bringing these things up, and obviously, I haven't had much time to research these.
They kinda threw you in hot water.
But I think there are items that we certainly will look into, and, you know, as a part of the council, you have a responsibility to help us uncover and solve these, too, so appreciate it.
What I learned, George, is that if I want real questions answered, I have to bring it up in a council meeting, because the committees don't always work.
Okay, and we can, and we'll sure look into that. Any other questions, communications from the public?
My name is Sarah Peterson, and my address is 510 Jennings, Hot Springs, and this is a follow-up to my presentation last, your last city council meeting. I was asked to bring a copy of a resolution, and I have done that, and I would like to hand that in, and also, Lindsay McLean is here, she's an expert biochemist witness for the intervenors against the Power Tech, Azarga Power Tech mining operation out in Dewey-Burdock, and Hanan Legary is also here, they're each prepared to make a five-minute statement. Hanan is a geologist, that's an expert witness for the consolidated intervenors, so I'd like to present them, Lindsay first and then Hanan.
So for the record, you mean H.J.N.N.A.N., L.A., capital G.A.R.R.Y. Thank you. You're welcome. Lindsay McLean? Thank you. I have a prepared statement here, so take that long. Thank you for your time in allowing Dr. Legary and I to make you aware of the pending permits for uranium mining and hazardous waste injection at Dewey-Burdock near Edgemont, South Dakota. My name is Lindsay McLean, I am an environmental biochemist, an expert witness for the consolidated intervenors against Power Tech Azarga uranium mining in the Black Hills. I have just a few points to outline for you, and you can read the entire explanation on handouts that I brought for you. So I have those handouts here somewhere, I don't know who I give those to. The first is that Power Tech Azarga is essentially bankrupt. They have admitted that they have insufficient funds to mine and insufficient funds to find and properly close all of these 7,650 old open boreholes from prior TVA exploratory activities of the 1950s and 60s. This requirement has been set by the NRC for this project to even begin mining, before they even begin mining, let alone post a proper bond for damages and cleanup. The future of uranium is bleak, and the break-even cost of mining is $63 per pound. The current spot price of uranium today is only $18 a pound and continues to fall. Add a cost of mining unique to this project, not included in other mining sites, our waste processing to reduce the levels of heavy metals in their waste waters to qualify for a class-five permit for deep injection well, since this state forbids class-one wells that this waste would normally go to. This reduces profits even more. All other ISL mines are situated over a roll front where the highest concentrations of uranium are found in nature. At Dewey-Burdock, the roll front has been mined out. The TVA, the Tennessee Valley Authority, came into the area for explorations on two separate occasions, looking for more recoverable uranium, but failed to find any, and then abandoned the site. Hence the unclosed boreholes. There is no economically viable, recoverable uranium at the site, no matter what Power Tech Azarga claims there to be. There has been a large-scale scam going on here to build innocent people out of their savings, promising huge returns that were never possible. Those unclosed boreholes, along with the numerous geologic breaks, allow mining of the aquifers already, or mixing of the aquifers already. Using the Minnaluosa Aquifer as a hazardous waste dump site is dangerous to those who use it and will likely contaminate other aquifers, as this wastewater travels downstream towards other states underground. Over the 10-year life of the permit, it can be renewed indefinitely, or sold to another company, and millions of gallons of water containing radiation and toxic metals will be permanently injected in that aquifer. The Minnaluosa Aquifer is used by many ranches and owners and homeowners in Fall River County, and though it is high in total dissolved solids, it can be made potable for drinking- and though it is high in total dissolved solids, it can be made potable for drinking very simply if you pass it through a water softener and reverse osmosis at the sink. A significant number of households are doing that. Water Tree, a water company in Rapid City, has many customers in Fall River County. Many other households have older wells that are not even registered in the state, and they don't know what aquifer that they're in. This could be disastrous for these people, as they would not know that they were drinking hazardous waste until their cows die and they all get cancer or some other severe health compromise. EPA will not permit this if we can show that the Minnaluosa is a human drinking water supply. These injection wells are those deep wells that are used to inject hazardous waste under pressure. They are also known to cause earthquakes as the pressure builds up. Oklahoma has a record number of earthquakes from injection wells and getting stronger by the day. They banned all injection wells two years ago, but the level of earthquakes has not subsided. There will be a series of public hearings where you can come and voice your opinion on these wells, as well as the 84 other shallower injection wells that they will use for actual mining if that ever comes about. The Class III mining injection wells will be injecting rock-dissolving chemicals into the Indian Cara aquifer that's also being used. There is information on time and dates for these hearings on the printouts provided and also on our website. There is a link to this online document at the bottom of every page of this handout. The nonprofit Council for Responsible Mining is organizing a free water testing for private well owners in the Fall River County who have a Minnaluosa well. Results will be presented to the EPA to show that this aquifer is indeed a human drinking water source. However, if the EPA does in fact issue this permit, baseline levels will have been established to compare in case these wells become contaminated and a class action suit becomes necessary. The Water Tree chemist has said that if the Minnaluosa becomes contaminated and total dissolved solids soar, that their customers' water systems will be overloaded.
Excuse me, I'm going to have to interrupt. Our limit for communications from the public is five minutes.
Yes, I'm finished anyway. I just wanted to thank you for your time.
Appreciate it, and if anyone is interested, certainly have applicable opportunity to voice your concerns at the appropriate EPA hearings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other communications from the public?
Hi, my name is Jessica Notable. I'm representing the Boys and Girls Clubs in Hot Springs. I'll refer you to my address, 441 South Fore Street. Back in January, we had a Blue Door celebration, where we celebrated what our donors and giving partners have helped us achieve at the Boys and Girls Clubs. And during that celebration, we celebrated a lot of our mission moments, our outstanding youth, and our club programming. And we wanted to recognize the city of Hot Springs for your continued support to kids and teens at the Boys and Girls Club.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We totally appreciate what you were doing for our benefit. Thank you. Are there any other communications from the public? If not, we'll move on to personnel.
Right here.
Excuse me.
You guys all know who I am and where I live. I just got a quick question for you. I'm really getting sick and tired of driving through all those potholes when I leave Brookside. There is a huge pothole that's in front of Brookside, and I just want to know, when are our roads going to get fixed? I think our roads need to take precedent over the golf course.
Basically, I can handle that if you let me, unless you want to, Bob. No, go ahead. I guess I'm still kind of in the transition period here between being on Public Works and whatever. Normally, what happens with those is the guys start, as soon as when hot mix plants start up in the spring up here, why, they make a survey of the whole town and go through them and patch them all. Otherwise, we can patch them. I'm not telling you that we can't. We can put a cold mixture in there, or we can fill them full of gravel. However, all we're doing by doing that is we're at an expense. We're not solving the problem. But I do understand, and there are a lot of potholes, and the street department is taking notice of them, and if you'd like to stop at City Hall and give a note to the girls, they'll see that Billy gets it.
Okay. Then my second question is, what is the city going to do with the plan with what Bob McDonald said about moving the VA to Rapid City? What is your guys' contingency plan in bringing jobs in the Hot Springs?
Okay, thank you, Chris. Your other communications?
Yeah, Phil Wexel, 338 South 22nd Street. There's been a lot of talk tonight, West crimes kind of started it, about this legal business and use of legal funds for the Nolan situation, among other things. I personally would like to, I don't know if it's even possible, make a vote of no confidence for Gunderson. Sarah, I don't even know you, but I do have experience with Gunderson. For years, I was on the board of the golf course and trying to get this road negotiation done. We still have no roads. We negotiated it over and over and over again with Gunderson, Jason Smiley, to be exact. We had, all of us owners at the golf course, put together proposal after proposal of very fair amounts of money that we were willing to pay for those roads, that were accepted by the city, that really we shouldn't have to pay for it all, but we're not going to go litigate that anymore. But we would really appreciate Gunderson not doing any legal work for the city anymore, because it has caused the city a fortune. The golf course settlement cost a fortune. The roads are costing us a fortune in property taxes that are unrealized, because people aren't building homes, and in all kinds of tourism. And now we're having even more legal expenses for something with regards to Nolan, and we can't even get answers in the public of who is asking for this legal advice. So with all due respect, once again to Sarah, I really would like to see a vote of no confidence and immediate removal, not only of Sarah from this meeting this evening, but from any use of Gunderson in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And your comments are taken under advisement. Thank you.
This is Sarah Peterson again, and I was asked by the council to have these expert witnesses come and give information, and I introduced Hannah Legary as one of the expert witnesses, and the council didn't recognize him. And I'm not sure if you understand what this is all about, George. I asked for the city council to look at writing a resolution against polluting our water, and that's why these two expert witnesses are here. And I'd like to introduce Hannah Legary again.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, council, for the time. A couple of years ago, when I testified on behalf of the Consolidated intervenors against the licensing of the Dewey-Burdock site, some students and I reviewed the well logs at the site. We reviewed 7,650 well logs and looked particularly at the notes that the actual drillers had made while doing the well drilling. And what we learned was that many of the boreholes from the historical period when the area was mined, you know, 20, 30 years back, the work was done poorly, sloppily, and the risk of contamination is extremely high. Okay? And so then Power Tech Azarga appealed those license contentions by testimony, and the Atomic Safety and Licensing Board upheld that testimony and made it a licensing condition. If the city of Hot Springs and the surrounding area doesn't take this consideration under advisement and act carefully, there could be permanent damage to the local environment and the aquifers. I'm available at any time to provide more information and more details, and I'm sure Lindsey is, in addition to what we've provided. Thank you.
Do you have your contact information, both Lindsey and Hannah?
Lindsey's behind me, her side.
Are there any other communications from the public?
I'd just like to respond to Sarah. I believe there's been some communications with you to indicate that at least we weren't ignoring your request of us. We were in a transitional period, knowing we were going to appoint a new mayor, and I think it's important to have that new mayor as part of this conversation. So it's not something that we weren't interested in or we were going to forget about. As far as Hannah was concerned, the mayor asked if there was any more comments from the public, and no one spoke up. So I'm certainly willing to listen to anything, and we're not ignoring your concerns. And now that the new mayor's on board, he can be part of those conversations.
Sarah, I want to thank you for coordinating, having Lindsey and Hannah come down here and supplying us with this information. And also, you mentioned that you had a copy of the resolution written by, was it Rapid City? Or another? I'd like to, if we could make copies of that, I'd like to...
That's just a format for a resolution, and it has to do with the water. That's where the state of South Dakota, but this would be coming from the city of Hot Springs. But just the format is, that's an example of a format of a resolution.
It's by understanding Rapid City wrote some type of resolution?
They wrote a letter of concern. They wrote a letter of concern. It wasn't a resolution. These resolutions can be presented to the EPA, along with any other testimony also. But, you know, we're trying to get as many people at the public comment as possible.
Sure, thank you very much.
That's our only recourse. There is not going to be any hearing on this.
Do we have a deadline on this, Sarah?
I think on Lindsey's handout, there's the hearing dates. The one in Hot Springs is like May 9th or something like that. There'll be one day here, one day in Edgemont, two days in Rapid City, and one day in Valentine, Nebraska. So this obviously would need to be done prior to that, so that can be handed in at the hearing.
Thank you.
Along with all your personal comments, too.
Thank you.
So going back to Phil Wexel's...
Chris, you've already added your five minutes, so let's say, if there are any other communications from the public...
I'd like to just make one comment, and it'll be brief. This is to Phil Wexel's comment. I guess I just want to state that the majority of the council here did not request the presence of our attorney tonight to save money. We didn't feel like she was here to, I mean, she was on here for reasons that haven't been addressed to us prior to this meeting, and if she wanted to discuss these things with us, it could be done in a letter or an email. And she, according to what Chris has told me, Georgia said she's here at no cost to the city. I believe you told her that?
Yes, you did.
You did?
She could do that.
No, excuse me. Krista?
Yes, she said that she offered to do it at no cost.
She said she could do it.
Nolan actually called her and said, "If you come, we are not paying you," which he has no right to do.
I disagree with that statement. That's not factual. I think Sarah will attest to that.
Yeah, I will. Nolan had just indicated that there was some talk to that effect and commit to anything in particular. If you would like, I can speak to the issue of why city attorneys are required, and is that a, please? Okay. So by state law, all governmental bodies, particularly cities, are required to have city attorneys. It's highly irregular not to have a city attorney at city council meetings. All, I think every city I know of has their city attorney come. The reason I'm late is because I was at a different city council meeting, serving as city attorney. It's just generally known amongst attorneys who sit in a public capacity that it's cheaper for taxpayers and public bodies to prevent problems than come in later and solve them on the back end. So any public attorney would encourage both the public body, as well as the department heads and members of the public, to utilize their attorney, particularly early on, ask questions. That's why attorneys generally come to the meeting, so I can answer any questions posed to me, questions about anything I said, and then take your questions, too, from the public. I would just really encourage that you utilize me. I am here prepared, at the city's request, to talk about two things, and I'm here. You're paying for my time to come and my gas bill, so I would really like to present on that. I think there are some people who came to, or I've been told have come to listen to the Code of Conduct and Robert's Rules presentation I have prepared. And I'll answer any other questions that you have, because I hope for all of you to understand why attorneys are important and useful.
How many meetings have you been to since you've been our attorney?
This would be my second.
In a year and a half?
Correct. I have oftentimes requested to come to present on things or answer questions, because I think there's a number of things that could be, there's a lot of discord that could be prevented if people understood what the law says about it. There's no reason to get upset over whether someone wants to do Option A or Option B if Option A is illegal. And oftentimes, it's at the back end that I'm asked about it rather than upfront. And so I would just really encourage all of you to consider utilizing me and on the front end.
Can I say one thing to you, Sarah? We did take you off of the agenda. You've been removed. So if you speak, would you just speak briefly, if you feel like you have to speak?
Am I, are you having me not speak then on the two issues?
No, you've been removed from the agenda.
Yeah, if it's been on the agenda, it's, you can, so...
You voted to remove it.
I'd like to do that.
I'm just saying, if you're going to speak, would you just be brief? Is that reasonable?
I'll take my questions. Mayor.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and continue on through the agenda, and I believe that we will be having an executive session to discuss one of the items, so... Okay, personnel, you have items?
Sir? Not my items. They can't go in executive session.
Pardon?
The two items I came to talk on cannot be discussed in executive session.
Okay.
So we don't...
Okay. What items do you have? I'm not...
To talk...
It's what you were asked to...
We do have certain memos we can provide you that she sent this afternoon about what you're going to cover, correct?
Okay. And I have a couple of copies, and I can go through them as well. One is on the Code of Conduct. I've had a number of questions posed and a request for some legal advice as to how a Code of Conduct can be used or should be used, and then also on Robert's Rules of Order and how those can or should apply in city council meetings.
Okay. If you can be brief, as requested, go ahead, and we can entertain you to go ahead.
Go ahead right now? Okay. So it came to my attention recently that...
George, excuse me, is there another chance for the public to speak?
Sure.
Because you guys act like you're spending your money. You're spending the hard-working people of this town's money on a lawyer that's going to tell us about Robert's Rule of Order. Kindle, $1.99 will tell you all you want to know about Robert's Rule of Order. What makes a city attorney who has only been to two city meetings an expert on Robert's Rules? Come on, give us a break. People around here are smarter than that. Gunderson has wasted this town's money to the tune of probably over $100,000 in the last three years, between the golf course and now whatever this debacle has been. Please, give us a break and go home. Again, with all due respect to you, Sarah, because I don't know you, but I do know your firm, and it has not got a good track record with this town. And why is somebody from Rapid City, a firm from Rapid City, our city's attorney, can we not find any attorney in our own city? No.
I'd like to mention something in backup, who would Carol answer a little bit earlier, is we actually had five people request that she not come, five council members, in order to save money. And also, earlier in the agenda, we voted five out of eight majority not to have her speak on item one.
Okay, council, I guess I would defer to you as to whether you feel that you want to hear a tutorial on Robert's Rules of Order?
Not really.
On the Code of Conduct? Any questions?
She already had the floor to speak.
She could send us an email.
I would still like to hear what Sarah has to say.
But we took her off, Georgia.
But we took her off, Georgia.
She's on communication.
Then she gets five minutes.
Okay, I'll take my five minutes.
I'd like to ask a question before we do that. And public, I apologize if this seems to be getting petty and continuing the last two months, but in all of the time that I was out there with you, watching city council minutes, meetings, I never saw an attorney sitting at the council table. Is that standard practice?
Yeah, yes. Not here. It is.
Until a year's total, we had an attorney at every meeting.
No, we didn't.
Many cities have their city attorneys next to the mayor at other city council meetings to help answer questions.
I just, in all the council meetings I attended, I saw them in the audience answering questions. I never saw them as part of the group representing the city. So it's just a clarification. Thank you.
Okay, so codes of conduct, they're fine to pass as long as they're done within state statute and the U.S. Constitution. Some cities, if you take, if you want to take a look at some that are really well done, there are some larger cities in South Dakota that have really good ones. It's absolutely fine to have a code of conduct that asks for civility, for instance, and a number of other things. But one thing that codes of conduct cannot do is conflict with state law or conflict with city policy. So everyone just needs to be aware that codes of conduct cannot and should not, they're not effective if they do. They need to be passed by ordinance. They can't be passed by one reading and a resolution unless they were only to put into action things that are already found in ordinances, and ours doesn't have that. So I'd encourage you to revisit, make a few of the revisions that I've indicated in my memo, and pass it by ordinance.
Can I interject there, Sarah?
What's that?
In that paragraph you mentioned committing future councils to the current Code of Conduct beside SDCL 9218 to 92115. I may just not understand this, but those are tax and levy appropriations, kind of that law. I didn't see that support.
You'll see this case that I cited, the comment in quotes come directly from the case Patterson versus Lind, that state that with few exceptions, a city council cannot bind future councils. And then there's some statutes listed that are those exceptions.
But the statutes, the SDCL then, that is tax and levy appropriations is what is pertinent to your...
No, those would be the exceptions. So with few exceptions, the city can only, cannot bind future councils.
So SDCL 9218 and then 92115 are the exceptions?
Yes, that's how the Supreme Court has listed those. This is the exact quote, including those statutory citations that the South Dakota Supreme Court listed in support of its holding there.
Okay.
One thing that, although it's a perfectly laudable goal to require civility and try to keep discord to a minimum and offensive comments to a minimum, elected officials still do have a First Amendment right to free speech. So as I indicate in my memo, there's a number of ways where you have to be really careful not to enforce codes of conduct in a way that limit or chill free speech. Lots of litigation is sparked over codes of conduct, so I just caution you before you utilize it, that it's something that causes lots of litigation when people attempt to enforce codes of conduct, depending on how they're written. Other things I want to make sure that I draw your attention to is how there is some indication of city government hierarchy in the Code of Conduct that instead should be in your city ordinances, and then also any additional fill-in that you need in personnel policies. You should not make something unethical or against a code of conduct if it's not already disallowed in ordinance or if it conflicts with ordinance. That's a terrible situation to find someone unethical for doing what's actually required of them in city policy, for instance. In the memo, I indicate the areas that I think should be revisited based upon those conflicts. Just keeping...
Can I clarify? Are you recommending that our council and mayor Code of Conduct be part of our personnel policies or an ordinance?
Ordinance, really. And you can put it in your ordinance code, or you could enact it through an ordinance that enacts a new personnel policy, too. Either way, it's done through ordinance. In this memo or in others, I go through the difference between ordinances and resolutions, and ordinances make a permanent change, and you would want to do that with a Code of Conduct, because that would be a permanent, a temporary change that simply enacts or puts the details on a previous ordinance, because there's no previous ordinance that speaks to this. There's some confusion, I think, over whether the Code of Conduct prohibits contact with city staff. It can't, and it doesn't. There's a state statute that I indicate in here that says city council members can receive and consider any input from any member of the public or employees. So I don't want there to be any confusion as to whom you can listen to, receive information from, and consider. You'll see some states, some cities use codes of conduct to keep, let's say, one particular council member from being threatening to one member of a department. So sometimes you've seen, you know, they make the news, for instance, in Rapid City some years ago, where you have one member always going to an underling, somebody low on the hierarchy, and asking for documents or reports that really should be issued by that department head, and they're kind of abusive or threatening in the way that they act. And codes of conduct can be effective there, and that's fine, but it shouldn't be construed or used in a way to limit input from the staff or the public. Employee criticism, that's one of those things where it conflicts with your policy right now. Right now, it indicates that employee criticism needs to go to the city administrator, but your policy handbook says that supervisors, department heads, and the mayor dole out discipline, so you should have that consistent. So the same person receiving criticism is the person who doles out criticism. There's other information in there with more detail, and if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Thank you.
The one, I'll be real brief on the Roberts Rules of Order.
Because you're talking a lot.
What's that?
We just got one minute.
One minute, okay. I've never seen, I've been to hundreds of public meetings, I have never seen any public body master Roberts Rules of Order or come anywhere close or even really attempt to use them at all. So I would draw your attention to SDCL 6119, which says formal rules are not to be used. In fact, meetings are, don't have to be run in any particular way, other than how the presiding officer would like to run them, and the manner is to facilitate lots of public comment. And so I've got some information to that extent there, some of the problems that can occur if you've got a requirement to follow Roberts Rules, and how it can be just far more effective if you allow discussion and information gathering before you have a motion. So please feel free to look that over and ask any questions.
Thank you. Okay, are we finished with communications from the public up here? If not, we'll move on to personnel. Item A and B, I believe that we can take together. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to combine Tyler Owens' effective 31817 at $8.65 and Kim Mawa, maybe, for the front desk gift shop on 317 of 17 for $8.65.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to committee reports, administrative and finance. Carol Anne?
I've got that report. Jason talked to us today about the cart path that Tim mentioned. It's a $20,000 proposed improvement done in conjunction with the Boulder Falls roads to save money. That's the only reason it's coming up right now. And they're going to look at some sort of assessment to the golfers to help pay for this. It's not been decided. It will be on the agenda on April the 3rd for the council to vote on that. We've discussed the cell phone policy. That will also be on the agenda April 3rd. Time clocks were discussed. Misty will review with department heads and have this on the April 3rd agenda. Brian Spencer spoke regarding keeping the city moving ahead. He spoke of a bright future for our city. He also spoke to us about the Miss South Dakota Pageant. They came to us first, asking for $50,000. Now it seems they can do with $9,750 for a sound system. The city would be, they want us to pay for that, and then they'd reimburse us for half of that by September the 1st. Then we would own the system. I'm a little confused by all of this. This is going to be on the agenda, but it was noted that the council, that the pageant spends $15,000 a year on rentals to rent this equipment. But we're going to pay for it. I don't know. It needs to be looked into a little bit more, maybe Nolan, if you could help me with that and the new mayor. Also, we discussed the process for hiring a new city attorney. This will be on our next agenda on April the 3rd. We also discussed the attorney use policy. It's agreed that we need a new policy, we need the policy. Hold it, let me get back here. Georgia and Andrea want this to come back to the committee on April the 3rd, so we'll discuss it some more. It will be on the agenda April 17th. The Brookside Apartment Pilot Program, the city was overpaid $19,695.35. This will have to be paid back to the county. Misty will give you a more detailed explanation. We also discussed donating four non-functioning light fixtures to the theater. These were surplus in February. This will be on the April 3rd agenda. And the last thing, city health premiums will increase May 1st. And that's it.
Thank you. Airport Advisory Committee, Georgia.
That's mine. Next week, I'll be attending the airport meeting in Mitchell, because Ed won't be able to go. Then the following Friday, we'll have an airport meeting at 8:00 in the morning.
Okay, thank you. And Custerfall River Regional Waste Management District, Andre.
We talked about transferring the $35,000 from the First Interstate Money Market Account to the First Interstate Checking Account. Permission from the DNR to pay off the loan to 2000, loan from 2015 as of April 1st of 17. There are 6.39 tons ahead. There was discussion, and it was tabled to possibly retain a different attorney. And it was notated by Barkers that the compactor that was repaired has come back and is working well.
Thank you. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Anne?
We meet April the 5th on Wednesday at 5:00 at the library.
Okay. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Kara.
We had a busy weekend last weekend, and we're already picking up with our sales. On Saturday alone, we did 2,624,19 cents. $530 was concessions alone. So things are really getting busy around there, which is good to see. And we have families coming in for spring break. We had post-prom last year, they want to have it again this year on 4/22 from 11:30 to 2:30 a.m. Our Adventure Cycling Group is coming again this August. This is the third year in a row. They camp out at Centennial Park, and they come, support the local businesses, and they come into Evans Plunge. We get a good turnout with the Adventure Cycling Group. They're from Montana. And we also have, we're carrying up for spring, there's enough, they need some, they have enough kids for Slide Dispatch, but they need lifeguards. Tomorrow, if anybody's interested here, if anybody's interested, tomorrow, Chris Hanson will be at the Job Fair at Mueller Center from 10:00 to 2:00. So go down there and talk to her. They need lifeguards and front desk. Boden will be providing CPR first aid training to the remaining city street employees on Tuesday. He did a portion of them previously. Tom will be attending CPO, Certified Pool Operator Training Class in Rapid in April, so both he and Boden will be certified. And the Evans Plunge Advisory Committee continues to work on a five-year plan. We're hoping in about a month or so, we can bring this before council. And one more note is, we respectfully request that city employees who are Plunge members be allowed to enjoy the personal time at Evans Plunge without interruption. All suggestions or concerns about the Plunge should be addressed to Chris, Boden, or Tom, not other cities, not other city staff or off the clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kara. Next on the items are parks, recreation, beautification, and cultural development. Chris said?
Yes, well, we didn't have a meeting. Our next meeting is the 3rd of April at 3:00 at City Hall. But they are, the bleachers are being painted and placed, and there is a schedule for the removal of trees for the extension on Freedom Trail. And they're finishing the roofing and the fixtures at Brookside very soon. And as for here at the Mueller Center, all I've got is this. I didn't know about the Job Fair, but thank you for mentioning that, Kara. And we've got a Realtors Association tomorrow and a 4-H Carnival on the 25th. Right to Life is the 26th. And then we have, I sent my grandma to the future on the 30th and 31st of March.
Okay, thank you. And Kim, Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, we had our meeting last Wednesday, the 15th. We had two items on the agenda, and both are before you tonight. They had been approved with a recommendation for approval by the council.
Thank you. Public Safety, Bob?
The Public Safety Committee met on March 15th at City Hall. Georgia was present, Nolan and myself. Had a number of old business items, the review of the fine and bond schedule that's on the agenda for tonight to be voted on. We had an update on the streetlight repairs. All the repairs have been done to the streetlights and some lighting along the Freedom Trail. And Nolan, correct me if I get this wrong, but the exterior lights at the library have been updated to all LED lights.
The streetlights have a leverage drive. Yes, but we still have a few more fixtures on the exterior to get inverted over to LED.
So those lights will be removed from the lighting contract. Update on the new police vehicle. It's still not in service. They're awaiting more equipment to arrive and to be installed. The update on the police K-9 unit, still waiting on word from the state of South Dakota on who's going to be awarded those dollars. Had a couple of new business items. The Public Safety Committee has been talking for a couple of weeks, discussing possible options for expanding public parking downtown. Two possible locations are on South River Street between University Avenue and Albany Avenue. The other location has been the parking space east of Wells Fargo Bank between Flagstone Road and South 6th Street. This particular agenda item will be more appropriate for public works rather than public safety, so it will be moved there and the discussion will continue. Kim talked with us about naming and renaming of city streets to correct 911 addressing issues with Golden West and the county as they update their telephone services. And she will sound a lot more intelligent when she talks with us about that as the, one of the agenda items. The next meeting will be April 9th, 2:00 p.m. at City Hall, and the public is welcome.
Thank you, Bob. And Public Works, can you speak to that also, Bob, please?
Public Works met on March 14th. Tracy was there, Tim was there, and myself. Two old business items, the State Farm Sewer Replacement. That project is mostly done. There was just some cleanup of the surface and putting down gravel. I drove by there this afternoon, and there was a road grader out doing the finishing touches on that. The city crew will talk with the landowner to make sure that the property's in light condition, is when the project originally started. The water leak on 13th Street is about half to two-thirds completed from Canton to Dakota Streets, and the remaining pipe should be replaced within about a week. Had some new business items. Replace a sewer line in the alley west of 16th Street. The sewer line in the alley between Baltimore and Canton Avenue will need to be replaced soon. This is an existing old clay line that is, that has already had numerous repairs. The Evans Plunge roof bid opening was on March 16th, last Thursday. The Public Works has also been talking about getting quotes to put fences around the three city water sources, the pump station, the 1 and 2 million gallon tanks. Tracy has received one quote to replace the, or to install those fences. It's under, a little under $50,000 for all three fences. The fences would be eight-foot chain link fences with three barbed wire strands at the top, per homeland security requirements. After additional bids are received, the Public Safety Committee will recommend to the full council how the city should proceed, should proceed to secure the city's water source, sources. Boulder Falls Project... Boulder Falls project, Tim talked a little bit about that. The frustration with getting that project off the ground. Tracy has submitted additional documents to Rural Development for the project, and the city is still awaiting approval from Rural Development to go off for bids for the project. We also talked about the Department of Transportation starting the design phase for this 385 road project. Tracy has provided preliminary sewer and water plants to the Department of Transportation for their review. The next meeting, I believe, will be March 28th at City Hall at 2 o'clock.
Thank you, Bob. Seven Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, Scott.
Yes, we had a meeting last Monday, and we discussed the golf cart paths. We're trying to shorten them, reroute them to maybe utilize some of the new road. On our master plan, this isn't just-- this isn't wanting to be done until 2024, but we figured with the new roads going in that it might save the city some money if we did them now. We still are waiting for the bids to go out on the road, so we still don't know the exact cost. But it will be probably around $20,000. And I know Tim mentioned that that was a lot to ask for cart path roads, but if you think about it, the golf course is bringing in money not only to the golf course, but it helps out hotels and restaurants and all the other city assets. So you have to take that into mind, too. Also, on a side note, the golf course is now open, so please get out and buy your memberships and golf.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Volunteer Fire Department, Andrea.
There were five truck reports that were read and reported on. The training was held on Sunday, which was yesterday, at the landfill. And the VA was supposed to be there. I haven't checked in, but they were going to bring their new information, new equipment as well. There was a letter read from a Hot Springs resident with a thank you and a $500 donation to the fire department. There was discussion regarding the ambulance shed. And Kim Barbieri was there and spoke with-- spoke regarding the shed and what their disaster plan is. They really talked about teamwork and roles when they're being dispatched and who takes the lead on different calls. And they were dispatched today at about 4 o'clock over by the state veterans home. And from what I could see from the state home, it was out in about 20 minutes. So thank you to those who responded.
Thank you. And again, I'd just like to thank all of the council people here for the-- all the hard work you do on these committees. Your job isn't just to come up here every other Monday night and sit and look pretty, but you do a remarkable job for our community. I think that citizens need to realize all the extra work that goes in behind the scenes, and we do appreciate it. Thank you. We'll move on in the area of ordinances. Item A, the first reading of ordinance 1173 to look at amending the fine and bond schedule for the city of Hot Springs. Is there any--
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Do you want me to read the motion?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to pass the first reading of ordinance 1173, an ordinance to amend the fire fine and bond schedule for the city of Hot Springs, ordinance violations.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and-- all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, the second reading of ordinance 1176. This talks about transferring five lots from rural service district to urban. Is there a motion to accept that?
Would we not just vote on something out there to change some stuff to-- from rural to urban, Kim?
I don't know if you guys actually finalized that. I think that's it.
Second reading. It was a--
There were some verbiage changes as well, so we had a second first reading, and now we're having a second reading. Probably seems like we've done this before.
Didn't we do this like in January for the other lots?
This might be the first time we've gotten the second reading. We've had three first readings due to the substantial changes to the content.
And why were these lots missed the first time around?
There were sales, and then there was, I think, two of the properties were sold, and then the assessor contacted us and came to City Hall and talked about missing a couple of other things with their changes. And I can find her notes and tell you specifically, but--
And who was left off on these that are not going to be assessed the taxes for this rule?
They will. It is effective with the 2017 taxes. That was one of the substantial changes.
So they will have to pay for this year. They were not--
They would have paid anyway for all their tax that were changing.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? If not, we'll accept a motion to accept the second reading of ordinance 1176.
I'll make a motion for the second reading of ordinance 1176, an ordinance transferring five lots from rural service district-- rural service district to urban service district.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the second reading of ordinance 1176. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I think in the second reading, we have to do a roll call.
Do a roll call, okay. Sorry.
Thank you. Kara Haggen.
Yes.
Georgia Holmes.
Yes.
Andrea Kramer.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Carolyn Swartbach.
Yes.
Kristis Blain.
Yes.
Tim Tesher. Skylar Wetzel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item C is the second reading of ordinance 1177, talking about amending Chapter 7 of the cemetery rules and regulations. Are there any comments, or is there a motion to accept that?
I'll make that motion. Second reading, ordinance 1177, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 Cemetery Section 771, Rules and Regulations.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or questions, comments on the motion on the floor? If not, we'll have a roll call, please.
Kara Haggen.
Yes.
Georgia Holmes.
Yes.
Andrea Kramer.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Carolyn Swartbach.
Yes.
Kristis Blain.
Yes.
Tim Tesher. Skylar Wetzel.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Item Delta, the first reading of ordinance 1178, talking about repealing Chapter 24 of the traffic section of our local ordinances. You all had an opportunity to look at that, and if so, we'll accept a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll make that motion. First reading, ordinance 1178, an ordinance repealing Chapter 24, Traffic Section 24A dot 15 of the revised ordinance of the city of Hot Springs, South Dakota.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the first reading of ordinance 1178. All those in favor, or is there any discussion, any questions, comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, that motion carries. We're looking at item E, first reading of ordinance 1179, an ordinance changing existing names of streets and naming-- renaming streets for the purposes of 9/11. Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just do a real quick summary. If you have questions after that, I'll take individual questions. You have in your packet the document for a draft ordinance, and it lists the names of the streets or no-named streets and what their proposed names are. This is a work that's been going on most of this winter with myself, the county, the dispatch offices, and we also dovetail with Golden West and with the US Mail Service. As we've gone through this, the list has grown a little bit because we find that people will go, oh, yeah, there's this one. That's a-- that's a problem, too. So there's-- there are going to be name changes for a number of reasons. For an unnamed roads, it could be that we just need to have it named so that we can use GIS and have location services. Sometimes it's a matter of, like for Grandview Motorhome, their entire development is under 2045 Canton Avenue. You can access trailers from Canton, Detroit, two unnamed streets, and off of the bypass. So obviously, for a 911 responder, that's an impossibility. They've actually told people who are taking care of people that have had heart attacks to go outside and flash the light so they can find them. So those are the kind of things that we're going through. We have chosen a number of the different mobile home parks. The easy ones were done early on. We were able to change just those addresses. These are the ones that actually require some naming of alleys. We have worked with the dispatch office that an alley is an okay suffix to the street name so that as we have a dirt road that is an alley, we can call it an alley, but we can use it as addressing service. There's one that I want to make a specific notice to on number seven, the Minicotta Avenue. That particular one, I want to make sure that you know that even though we're extending the name of Minicotta Avenue into the state veterans home, we are not maintaining it. We're doing it by name only so that they can maintain their historic address for the main facility. So that was a point that I wanted to make sure of. I can go over each one with you, or just by questions if you have them.
Okay, are there any questions of Kim concerning this ordinance?
I'd make a motion to go ahead with the first reading of item E, ordinance 1179, an ordinance changing the existing names of streets or naming no-named streets for the reasons of 9/11 location and public safety.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the first reading of ordinance 1179. And again, a rookie question, Misty, do we need a roll call on these?
First reading is not required. We really don't even need to vote on a first reading, but this council has requested to do that.
Okay, good. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the motion does carry. Move on in the agenda to new business. Item A, we want to look at a discussion and possible motion to appoint a council member to represent the city during the Consolidated Board of Equalization meetings.
Could you entertain a motion to appoint Bob Nelson to that?
I certainly would. If he's willing.
December 11th at 1 o'clock is the first meeting, and they'll have more if they're needed. Yeah, we're just--
No, we're just talking, okay. Being-- this just being sprung, you know, if there is-- if there isn't anyone that's willing right now to step up, I would be willing to take a motion to-- would you be willing to do it? So we've got two possible nominees. Bob, I know you're on two committees. Would it be all right if Georgia stepped in in that area?
Well, that was going to be my comment. I believe that Georgia has been doing it for the last year, two years, four years. Then I think it would be appropriate for her to continue doing that. She has past knowledge, past history that I certainly wouldn't have.
Okay, we did have a motion on the floor in that--
I'll just change my or modify my motion to nominate Georgia.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we appoint Georgia Holmes to be the council member to represent the city during the Consolidated Board of Equalization meetings. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion does carry. Item B, we're looking at a discussion to approve automatic budget supplement of $1,969.39 or 38 cents to the police department for vehicle repair.
I make a motion to approve a budget supplement of $1,969.38 to the police department for a vehicle repair that was damaged in an accident.
Okay. And Georgia's seconded that, so it's been moved and seconded. I do have a question on that, Misty. Have we gotten-- is that insured, and is that money--
Yes, we would not be approving an automatic budget supplement had the revenue not already been received. It was the result of an accident. A citizen hit one of our police vehicles, slid on Smisey Road. The total damage to the vehicle was around $2,900, but the city has a $1,000 deductible, and our insurance, while trying to get the other insurance company to pay, has given us the difference. So we have already received those funds. And we expect $1,000 more.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Yes.
Are there any other questions or discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. Okay, we move on to item C, discussion and possible motion to approve replat of tract LC of block 31.
We missed the facade grant.
No. Yeah, we're good.
I think we're-- I think we're-- we're don't-- don't confuse--
No, did we do-- did we do C? I'm just not thinking about that.
We're on C.
Okay, I thought you were reading a tract.
And we're looking at second Minicotta addition to the city of Hot Springs, block 31. Does someone have the details on that and information?
I don't.
Oh, I've got the other agenda. I had the wrong one.
My name is Jim Bolzman. I'm representing Lynette Carter. I'm with Hartland Real Estate, and I live at 327 South Coast Street. This is basically a vacation of an alley. The alley has been vacated both north and south of Lynette Carter's property, and she bought the recently purchased two lots on the other side of that alley, and we're looking to just vacate the alley and make it one person.
Okay. If there's any questions, just-- Okay, are there any questions of Jim? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve that replat.
I'll make that motion to approve replat of tract LLC of block 31 of second Minicotta addition to the city of Hot Springs.
Second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the replat of block 31. Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. Item D, looking at the possibility of approving a 2017 facade grant of $2,500 to the Hot Springs Theater for exterior painting.
Actually, could I make a-- I'd like to make that motion for the facade grant to approve 2017 facade grant, $2,500 to the Hot Springs Theater LLC for exterior painting. Excuse me, Andrea, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
I'll second.
I was just asking if we could do D and E at the same time. That's all I was asking. I have the first agenda we received, so I don't have the second one that was sent out, you know.
So if you could add to that, maybe--
I will add that.
Bluehorn dances.
If you'll let me read it, I'll add it to it also, if it's art with the mayor.
Absolutely.
Okay, the discussion and possible motion to approve the 2017 facade grant. This is for the other part of the grant. It's a total of $5,000, and this is the $2,500 to Bluehorn dances for awning replacement.
I'll second that as well.
And Misty, I assume we have the funds, and the applications have been properly submitted. Okay? So we've had-- we do have a motion and a second to approve the two facade grants. Are there any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion does carry. Motion does carry. And we've got a discussion, a possible motion to approve a private hangar land lease agreement with Kim Kush. Someone have the details on what this?
Do you want to vote?
Mr. Kush here?
I guess to summarize this agenda item, I thought Mr. Kush might be here tonight. We have a private individual looking to build his own hangar on the airport land, and so in 2013, the council set the rate to do that, which I believe is 10 cents a square foot per year. And then this agreement viewed by Patterson Palmer allows us to maintain that lease agreement for approximately 30 years.
We entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the grant, or the land lease agreement with Mr. Kush.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, and we do approve the private hangar land lease agreement with Mr. Kush. Are there any further questions or comments?
I have a question. On the land lease agreement, towards the bottom of the first page, LEC further agreed that any and all buildings constructed on sand premises shall be of a uniform size, style, and color. Is that uniform size, style, and color to existing buildings, or only within, or only new buildings that he might construct?
That would be to existing buildings. There is a style guide for new hangar construction that tries to keep the appearance uniform of what is currently out there. So I'd have to follow that that guideline.
And I know there's been discussion in the past about the city putting up hangers out there. Will this in any way change the city's ability to do that if they should decide to put up new hangers?
No, it should not. What it does is it satisfies the demand for at least two to three planes, well, sorry, one to three planes. But I believe talking with our airport manager, there's still plenty of demand out there for the city to construct our own and just be further down the taxiway to do so.
Thank you.
Okay, good questions. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the private hangar land lease agreement with Mr. Kim Kush signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We've got a, item G, possible motion to reappoint James Ford Ward to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a five-year term expiring December 31, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or discussion, comments?
Is this something that he's willing to do?
Yes.
Okay.
And we thank him for his commitment to a five-year term.
Okay, thank you. Good question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry.
Does he live in the city limit?
I'm not sure where he lives.
Lives outside of town.
Kim was just here, and she leads that committee.
He don't live in city of Hot Springs, how should he be on the board?
If I recall the ordinance correctly, it doesn't require you be in city limits to serve on that board.
He's on all status.
That's correct.
I believe he's right. The ordinance does not state that you have to be within city limits. The ordinance states that you can be within the three-mile limit for planning a building.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, item H and I, we should be able to do these together, surplusing an iPhone 5S and an iPhone 5C.
I'll make a motion to surplus an iPhone 5S and an iPhone 5C.
I'll second that.
Okay, and what are the details on that, Noel or Misty?
Those are two of my old phones that have been already wiped clean and ready to be reissued to the public or whoever is the high purchaser, I guess. They estimate to be under 500, so after they're approved, we surplus only three estimates on them. And then once we get those estimates, assuming they're all under the $500 threshold, we'll set a fixed price, advertise them, hopefully get the best money we can for them.
They're just sitting in a closet right now. They're unused.
And we do have backup phones available should one of our three smartphones issue fail.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions?
We discussed it as far as use by our employees because we do have some employees that wanted to get reimbursed for use of their phones, and I felt like it was something we could offer to them. So I don't know, I don't really agree that we should be giving them out.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion on the floor to surplus these two phones. Heard the discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion does carry. Item J, possible motion to remove Kim Kesher from all city financial accounts and associated accounts and replace with the recently elected council vice president, is Bob Nelson.
I would most remove Kim Kesher's most. I want you to replace with recently elected vice president.
That was quick, quickly done.
I would like to second that and say thank you, Tim.
Any comments, questions?
Bob, I'll need you to come into City Hall and get me the IDs I need to provide to the banks to get you out into the comments. Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion carries. Discussion and possible motion to reconsider, rescind the decision to pay Nolan's legal fees. I believe this has been discussed, and if there is further discussion on this, I'm believing that this should be done in the executive session since it involves personnel in accordance with Personnel Manual.
No, we wouldn't be able to go to executive session on this.
We haven't voted to pay.
We already voted twice to pay.
We voted, or.
Yeah, they're paying.
So we'll move on to item L, discussion and possible motion to authorize travel request for the city administrator Nolan to attend the Great Open Spaces City Management Association meeting.
I'll make that motion if you're ready for it.
I'll second it.
Okay, then moved and seconded. Are there any comments, discussion? Nolan, can you just give us a brief?
Step back and just restate the full motion, but we just do our diligence.
I'll state it. A discussion and possible motion to, I don't guess I need to say that, excuse me, just move to authorize travel requests for city administrator Nolan Schroeder to attend Great Open Spaces City Management Association training in Spearfish April 26 through the 28.
All right, thank you.
Uh huh. Give us a second.
So to provide clarifying information, the SDML offers by annual, twice a year, city manager, that's what we call city administrators, city managers, anyone that functions in the managerial capacity for municipalities, training of kind of roundtables. And this spring, it's going to be in Spearfish, up in Spearfish Canyon Resort, I believe. And what's nice about this travel request or this training opportunity is it's combined with the ICMA, the ICMA, which is the professional organization for city management nationwide. We're lucky to be a small region, being able to host such a large organization, so I'm anxious to be approved and to attend this in April.
My only comment was, didn't you go to a training already once this year for admin? Administrator, city administrator?
No, that was approved for June, I believe.
So you'll be going in June?
Yep.
And again, are there any further discussion concerning this motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And we'll look at item M, discussion and possible motion, we want to look at authorizing travel request, EPMS Maintenance Technician Tom Noss to attend Advanced Training Products Incorporated Certified Pool and Spa Operator Certification.
I'll make that motion to authorize travel request for Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Maintenance Technician Tom Noss to attend Advanced Technology Products Inc. Certified Pool/Spa Operator Certification Course on April 4th and 5th in Rapid City.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and is, I do have a question on the acronyms and so forth. Does anyone have some details on what this actually is?
You should. Yep.
Okay.
You're a military man, so you'll figure this out pretty quickly.
Yeah. It's been moved and seconded, and then that we accept this motion to authorize a travel request for Tom Noss. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. We have an item N, we look, we want to look at authorizing travel requests for Police Chief Mike Close to attend the South Dakota Police Chiefs Association Spring Conference in Deadwood on April 18 through the 20th. Any, will accept a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion to have the Police Chief Mike Close attend the conference April 18 through the 20th in Deadwood.
I'll second that.
Okay. Then moved and seconded, then that we send our police chief to Deadwood. Is there any further discussion or questions concerning this? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion does carry. And item O has been taken off the agenda. Move on to the Finance Officer Report.
Thank you, Mayor Connie. Thank you for being here. I'm sorry again, there was not enough agendas. That's on me. I should have known that a meeting such as this would have high attendance, and I needed more of them, so I apologize if you're looking for somebody to blame, it was me. Online though, Nolan makes sure that all that information is available for you prior to council meetings, so you can always print a copy up at home in case I forget again. Award seats for councils circulating now, so all of you interested in what's going on in city government and wanting to step in and fill some empty seats that we know are going to come up, please make sure that you circulate nominating petition. You have until the 28th of March to submit that to City Hall, and the election will be June 6th. And if you haven't had anyone who's interested in running, everyone has different abilities and skills and knowledge that they bring to the table, so if you're looking for somebody to invite you, here's your invitation. Also, we have a mayor's seat, even though we have filled our vacancy for the time being, and those petitions can be taken out starting the 7th of April. You'll see that notice of vacancy and next week's start. Those petitions need to be completed and filed with the finance office by Cinco de Mayo, so May 5th. Again, petitions can be picked up at City Hall, or you can download them from the South Dakota Secretary of State's website, which is sdsos.gov. Make sure that you read the instructions for printing those out. They need to be self-contained, so they need to be printed front and back, and there are some guidelines on circulating nominating petitions that's really helpful on that website as well. I just want all of you to know that the Boulder Falls Street Improvement Project is still and has been since the lawsuit was settled, moving forward. Although Tracy Bastian is still working with Rural Development to get the bid specs the way they want them so that we can go out for bid, we are still moving forward. Our city attorney has prepared and mailed out number of construction easements, temporary construction easements. We're working on some other easements that will be needed for the building of the roads. There is a hearing to be held at the April 3rd council meeting. You would have noticed publications, and everyone who was a property owner was mailed out by certified mail. Notice of that upcoming hearing that is on the proposed assessment role. There is a process for assessing property owners for street improvements. This one's a little bit different than others because we had a settlement dictating the dollar amount, but there are steps still being taken to move that project forward while we're waiting for those bid specs to be approved so that we can go out for bids. The hearing will be at 7:20 at the April 3rd meeting. If anyone has anything they want to discuss regarding those assessments, that would be your time to be heard. The loan payoff to Rural Development was in the batch of current claims we approved tonight. It's a pretty big batch, and that was because it included that payment, so thank you for approving that. I do believe that that was a good decision to save the city a phenomenal amount of interest over the life of what was left in that loan, and as we're looking to take out another one to build the roads, it's a good time to make that payment. The annual meeting for the South Dakota Municipal League is being hosted by the City of Hot Springs on April 5th. More information, George, for you to follow, the host, city mayor typically does some emceeing. It won't all be on you, but I do have some information to share with you. We are looking for donations of door prizes. We're looking for about five to seven door prizes valued around $25 to give away to the attendance of the meeting. If anybody is a business owner or feels passionate and compelled to help the city with some door prizes, we're looking for donations for those. I think, George, I may be helping out to come up with some of those. We're happy to host that meeting. If you aren't aware of the towns that are in District 9, they include Baseline, Fox Elder, Buffalo Gap, Custer Edgemont, Airborne, Hermosa, Hill City, Hot Springs, Keystone, New Underwood, Oryx, Pringle, Quinn, Rapid City Wall, and Wasta. So we'll have an opportunity to showcase and highlight our community to visitors from all over the area at this meeting. We, as a city, in one day last week, received three donations. Three in one day is pretty spectacular. It's never happened before. I'd like to thank the Friends of Evans Plunge for the pool noodles and $300 to purchase some additional lifeguard flotation devices. $100 from the new owners of the Dew Drop. They donated that $100 to our DARE program. Thank you to them. And then Builders First Source donated concrete siding for the golf course bathrooms to be redone, and their value is approximately $2,000. So thank you to those in our community that continue to think we're doing good enough things to donate. We appreciate that. The dates for our audit to begin is early May. The annual drinking water report is available at City Hall and will be in the Star.
Okay, thank you very much. Lot going on. Nolan, city administrative report, please.
Sure, I'll be brief with mine. Tim, you brought up some great points earlier with your communication with the public. I had a training opportunity last Monday to go to, and it reminded me that people learn different ways. There's the audio, the visual, and the kinesthetic learners, and I think it might be helpful if we provide a written summary for P V and S, the sludge watering device, even the golf court passage review today, and also an update on Boulder Falls. Misty gave a good, pretty, a pretty good summary of where we're at with that, the attorney components to it, the temporary easements. But if we provide this to you all in writing, that might be easier for you to communicate it back out to the public than asking these questions frequently. So we'll make sure that the next public works meeting, which is next Tuesday, we have a thorough summary for each that we can quote-unquote arm you with as you go out and get coffee or walk the freedom trail each day. Other than that, items for the public to be particularly aware of, we do have a job fair tomorrow. We do have a lot of seasonal positions we're hiring for. Being a tourism economy, this time of the year, it's very important that we get staffed up. I know it's not just us, it's also our hotels, our restaurants also are looking for good help. Difficulty is the price points that people are paying aren't what people can make a living on. That said, we do have multiple positions available where you can do 40 hours out of the different jobs or one job particularly. Special emphasis on Evans Plunge. We do need lifeguards, we do need front desk staff or gift shop staff, which are kind of a transferable job there. And also, we'll begin staffing up for summer recreation. We do not yet have a director, but this week we hope to make an offer to one of the three candidates that were interviewed and move ahead with that for the 2017 summer rec season. And lastly, for the public, we have dump week coming up, our free dump off days at the old material refuse site or the Scurants and Maintenance Shop. That'll be April 17th to 21st this year. It is not the last full week of April, it's the second-to-last full week of April. We have other projects scheduled for that last full week of April that took priority. So it's going to be April 17th to 21st. Same rules as previous years apply, you need proof of residency, and of course, we refuse the right to take in certain materials. So we'll have more details for that on our Facebook page, also in the upcoming edition of the Star, not this Tuesday, most likely here in the next couple of weeks, and then also down at City Hall, too. We have this posted on the events wall. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Nolan. Council President report.
I don't have one. Thank everybody for putting up with me.
Thank everybody for putting up with me in the interim here. It's been a fun ride, I guess you might say. And I do have a phone and a key for you.
Okay.
So thanks a lot, everybody.
I'd like to, before we do adjourn, I'd also like to say thank you, Georgia, for the job you've done stepping in. And I also want to thank you, the council. I'm going to be asking a lot of questions. You see anything that about step off a cliff, please let me know. And, you know, I think by working together, we can continue to move Hot Springs forward. One of the things I always like to say about our community, the best is yet to come, so thank you. I will accept a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion to second.
Oh, did you, Tim, did you have something?
I was just going to thank Georgia for all the work she's done in the interim here. Not an easy job to just step in, and none of us are trained to be mayors, I don't think. So good luck to you, Georgia.
Thanks.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, get up and leave. Thank you.